City Council meeting, January 2nd, 2017.
The time now is eight fifty-nine. If you all would please silence your cellphones. We're gonna begin our meeting promptly at nine o'clock. Well, good morning. The time now is nine o'clock. We're going to begin our first meeting of the new year with prayer by Pastor David Chandler, who's with First and Simply a Meridian. Father, God, we pledge allegiance. If you all would please stand with us as we begin our meeting.
Father God, we just come to you in the mighty name of Jesus. We just thank you, Father, for your love and for your grace and for your goodness. We thank you, Father, for this upcoming new year. Father, I pray for the ones that are in the force, our president, our new elected president, all of our cabinet members and just the different ones, Father. I pray that in Jesus' name they make right choices and good decisions. And I pray that in the name of Jesus, they're walking out your plan and your purpose, help the Lord to give them wisdom and understanding. Help us as a people to walk after you with all of our heart and soul and strength. Father, I lift up this city council this morning to you. And I just ask you, Father, to bless each and every one. Father, I just thank you for this meeting. Father, I thank you for our mayor, all of our local authorities. I pray, Father, for our chief of police and, Father, our fire chief. And I just ask you, Father, to bless them. Lord, help them to do the right thing and make good decisions. And what would be honored to you, Father, I lift up our policemen. And I pray, Father, that they're doing the right thing and making right choices and patient and kind. And the Lord will hold up the fort to what they should be doing. And I pray that we as citizens will love one another like you love me. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pray to the United States of America and to the Republic of its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice and with every righteousness. We will begin our meeting, asking, are there any amendments to the agenda? No amendments? All in favor? Any opposed? Consent agenda? All in favor? Any opposed? Routine agenda item number one, order appointing James L. Copeland as ex-official member of the Meridian Planning Commission.
Moving through rule seven. Good morning, council. Happy New Year. First, the item we have on routine agenda is for Mr. James Copeland. He works at NAS. Some of you all may know that James normally sits over here in this area, right here. He's not here this morning. But if you all know that we're participating in a self-renewing study for NAS Meridian, the study will probably recommend formalized relationships between the city and the Navy. One way to ensure this formal communication is to allow a Navy planner, which he is, to sit in and then voting ex-official to pass the Meridian Planning Commission. This would allow them to come in or develop their proposals like sale towers that may interfere with this flying mission while providing our planning commission with information it needs to arrive at decisions consistent. We're protecting valuable assets of slave use and other citizens in that property out there. Attached is the appointment for him to be the ex-official member of this planning commission. And we're regressing this morning for Mr. James Copeland to serve as ex-official for our Meridian Planning Commission. Are you reading that? I'm reading that on the floor, on the break. One of the good things that's, uh, one of the good things I think about putting him on there is that he had a task to focus for those who don't necessarily understand where his position's gonna be. To have the opportunity to have a comment as a Navy planner, have a comment on developing proposals on the issues for sale towers. He's also, I think, very instrumental on joint landings, on the joint landings study. And also provide necessary and specific information as it relates to flying plans and how that would interfere with our city and our county.
That'd be good. And the future puts on more downtown works and associations, these are good and well-studied. They have a time, I think, good to have one of those ex-officials also. It's very cool. Well, good morning. Let's know it, yeah.
Any other comments or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Routine item number two, order authorizing acceptance of service contract for plan and GDO LLC for tree inventory slash monitor for plan.
Council, you know you approved this grant last year with Mrs. Harster Commission. The grant was approved when actually was twenty thousand dollars. It's a tree grant, it's also software. Due to the grant, it says that we have the contract, the plan GDO, plus what this contract's about. Have Kevin here, do you have any questions?
What's the cost of the contract?
It's forty thousand dollars, twenty thousand, my actual decision, total is forty thousand.
Plan and public, I will buy and sell all of our trees.
Dr. Thomas, the software, currently we have a tree management program for the last twenty-plus years. And that inventory is the trees that we can haul. And it's a management tool, so we can track the work that we've done with the trees. And the tree management program is no longer serviceable. So when we lose what we have, we don't have anything. So this is the opportunity to give you some.
So if someone go around town and get the trees and then get data, what happens?
Yes, what happens? Currently, we have about six thousand trees in our inventory. And as part of this contract, as a consultant, we'll do additional inventory. Probably several thousand more trees to add to what we currently have.
So they go out and inventory?
Yes, sir.
That's part of this contract, yes, that's a good thing.
Um, this is something with a different question. How often do you all send someone out within the neighborhoods to monitor some of the large trees that's in the right of way, that's in neighborhoods? Do you all ever, if you have a plan that maintains or inventories the things, the trees that are inside of their neighborhoods?
It's based on, as you receive a call, we investigate. We don't have a straight-by-straight plan, which is what this management plan will define.
Is there any way in your plan you can incorporate, I think, kind of what Ms. Houston's asking? There's some trees that you don't necessarily know it's a problem until you get a call, which is sad. But there's some trees that just by observation have limbs that noticeably hang over the trees or noticeably have, are at more of a risk to fall into the trees if there's a heavy rain that it sustains. So is there any way we can incorporate accommodating that issue into this plan?
This management plan, the rest is specific. Apparently, any plant that has any limbs thirteen feet over the street, can't make it. Or maybe limits eight feet over the sidewalk. But public works is overwhelming, but they have sort of a management plan that specifies this one will be done, or seems like it's gonna be done.
Seems like we did this about two years ago. We agreed no more big trees, because we already got enough. Is that, is that true?
No, sir. That's not true. You talked about the big trees, and yes, the big trees have issues. Larger tree, a bit, uh, so.
Oh, we still plant the big trees?
We plant, we'll plant small trees that the intent is to have camp.
Well, I'm all for the software, but I'm not for paying somebody to do a contract to do something that we should have been doing for years and years. It's amazing to me how many departments here have to have somebody from the outside come and tell them what they're doing. It's amazing, it's amazing that we've got all these years of history here in this city. We've had years since we've asked about it, do some kind of inventory and everything. And then we always come up with this plan to contract somebody to tell us what we're doing. Now, doesn't that kind of surprise, shouldn't that surprise you? It surprises me that I can't vote for any more contracts to tell us what we should already know.
Any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Routine item number three, order authorizing acceptance of renewal agreement with Unit Trans D for data recovery support.
That change, yeah.
Madam President, the, uh, this is, this is authorized, the city reviewed a contract with Unit Trans D for data recovery from the city's IT department. I recommend approval for this. This is, uh, this is a good, good price that we're getting here. And I think it keeps us current in the IT world for data recovery.
Any other confirmation costs?
Cost is ten thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars a year.
What is this tell of state that we don't already know?
This is data recovery, should we have something happening within the system that we have to recover, so we can, to not put the city down with our, in our IT and information processing within the city.
Why haven't we had this?
We do have, this is a renewal.
A renewal contract?
Yes.
Any additional questions or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Routine item number four, order authorizing acceptance of bid for renovations of the municipal rear cell building.
Morning, council.
Morning.
As you know, last year we asked council for some renovation money to upgrade the carousel. We asked the council to accept the lowest bid as projected by J and J Contract Corp. Also, you see in the, in the bid calculation, there'll be some stuff we'll be doing internally. We found that we could do some of that stuff in-house and save, save city money.
Collegeville, Mississippi.
We have two, two, one for Meridian, others for Collegeville. In, in the scope of the service, it tells you what they're gonna do, Dr. Thomas. They're gonna research the painting and the ceilings, they're gonna pick your windows. Also, on the notes, we just talked about the door replacement, working with Mr. Hugh. He has great concrete, good, Russian guy, bless him. And we do some of that stuff in-house to save some little bit of money.
We, we previously allocated, I think, somewhere over eighty thousand dollars initially before y'all took bids. Bids come in at sixty-three thousand dollars. To what extent do you plan to utilize some surplus or additional funds for the maintenance of that building?
The surplus funds, uh, we're gonna be addressing those, uh, Mr. Mark, until we get inside and see what's going on. If you're looking in, in the bid calculation, there's some of that stuff we're doing. The contract does have a bill to do, until we get into the building and see the exact damage, we're gonna be addressing that. We'll come back if need to, council, address those issues.
Our ground there needs more mulch and that playground.
I don't like, I don't really like the mulch. Yeah, I bring, so the mulch is, uh, here's termites, I'll, I'll give you some of that.
Playground mulch?
Yes, sir.
Just needs more, it's too low.
Too low, yes, sir.
Just doesn't cover, fix any of the horses or carousel or something like that?
We need to address that in the next budget year. This, that's, that's a little bit over cost now.
Well, you talked about doing that local.
Yeah, but I don't know if we do local, but we do address that in the next budget year.
Um, and where are we as far as having a termite inspection type of contract? Are we, I know we mentioned that, are we in the process or still looking at making sure that, um, our facilities, so they won't get in some of the conditions that they're currently because of termites?
We did that, and what we ran into is that since the deal's always in such a bad shape, that the people won't give us a termite contract. So the new buildings we win, what, what the pest control has been out, pest control service for a long time, we ask Terminus, Terminus won't come in, they'll come in and treat it. But any damage from termite, they won't cover. Because of the, the termite damage already, it's already existed.
With the upgrades on this particular building, once we get everything replaced with a contracted then?
We'll ask them to come out and look at it and make sure that's, if there's specification.
Any additional concerns? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Routine item number four, order authorizing acceptance of bid for renovations of the municipal rear cell building.
Morning, council.
Morning.
Uh, as you know, last year we asked council for some renovation money to upgrade the carousel. Uh, we asked the council to accept the lowest bid as projected by J and J Contract Corp. Also, you see in the, in the bid calculation, there'll be some stuff we'll be doing internally. We found that we could do some of that stuff in-house and save, save city money.
Collegeville, Mississippi.
We have two, two, one for Meridian, others for Collegeville. In, in the scope of the service, it tells you what they're gonna do, Dr. Thomas. They're gonna research the painting and the ceilings, they're gonna pick your windows. Also, on the notes, we just talked about the door replacement, working with Mr. Hugh. He has great concrete, good, Russian guy, bless him. And we do some of that stuff in-house to save some little bit of money.
We, we previously allocated, I think, somewhere over eighty thousand dollars initially before y'all took bids. Bids come in at sixty-three thousand dollars. To what extent do you plan to utilize some surplus or additional funds for the maintenance of that building?
The surplus funds, uh, we're gonna be addressing those, uh, Mr. Mark, until we get inside and see what's going on. Uh, if you're looking in, in the bid calculation, there's some of that stuff we're doing internally. We found that we could do some of that stuff in-house and save, save city money.
Collegeville, Mississippi.
We have two, two, one for Meridian, others for Collegeville. In, in the scope of the service, it tells you what they're gonna do, Dr. Thomas. They're gonna research the painting and the ceilings, they're gonna pick your windows. Also, on the notes, we just talked about the door replacement, working with Mr. Hugh. He has great concrete, good, Russian guy, bless him. And we do some of that stuff in-house to save some little bit of money.
We, we previously allocated, I think, somewhere over eighty thousand dollars initially before y'all took bids. Bids come in at sixty-three thousand dollars. To what extent do you plan to utilize some surplus or additional funds for the maintenance of that building?
The surplus funds, uh, we're gonna be addressing those, uh, Mr. Mark, until we get inside and see what's going on. Uh, if you're looking in, in the bid calculation, there's some of that stuff we're doing. The contract does have a bill to do, until we get into the building and see the exact damage, we're gonna be addressing that. We'll come back if need to, council, address those issues.
Our ground there needs more mulch and that playground.
I don't like, I don't really like the mulch. Yeah, I bring, so the mulch is, uh, here's termites, I'll, I'll give you some of that.
Playground mulch?
Yes, sir.
Just needs more, it's too low.
Too low, yes, sir.
Just doesn't cover, fixing any of the horses or carousel or something like that?
We need to address that in the next budget year. This, that's, that's a little bit over cost now.
Well, you talked about doing that local.
Yeah, but I don't know if we do local, but we do address that in the next budget year.
Um, and where are we as far as, um, having, uh, termite inspection type of contract? Are we, I know we mentioned that, are we in the process or still looking at making sure that, um, our facilities, so they won't get in some of the conditions that they're currently because of termites?
We did that, and what we ran into is that since the deal's always in such a bad shape, that the people won't give us a termite contract. So the new buildings we win, what, what has, what the pest control has been out, pest control service for a long time, we ask Terminus, and Terminus won't come in, they'll come in and treat it. But any damage from termite, they won't cover. Because of the, the termite damage already, it's already existed.
With the upgrades on this particular building, once we get everything replaced with a contracted then?
We'll ask them to come out and look at it and make sure it's, if there's, uh, specification.
Any additional concerns? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Routine item number five, order authorizing acceptance of bid for bulldozer.
Madam President, we're asking for acceptance of the bulldozer for the city, which was a cost of a hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars. Though, as noted on the bid calculation sheet, it appears as though it is not the lowest bidder. However, uh, because of the specifications that were put in, that we wanted somebody local, uh, we are using, uh, bucket machinery as being the lowest bidder and request that you, uh, accept this bid.
Have we just, uh, adjusted to local? Got to be enough to, okay, you know, you can move as people. I like to just say local, but that sounds good. Well, it's a, and I, oh, I'm sorry, I, I made a, I made a note to ask questions. Glad you stood up. Um, although the company is not the lowest, although it's not the lowest, uh, and best bid, I mean, it is nevertheless a bid that, looking at the delivery date, says that if we purchased this, this caterpillar B4K2, we'd be able to get it. We could have gotten it basically at the end of last month, which means it's possibly ready to pick up now if we did purchase it versus the lowest bid, which would require a delivery date of a window of sixty to ninety days.
That's correct. And also, let me go back to the concept of lowest and best. It's in the city's best interest to have a collective vendor. You talk about this, these big pieces of equipment, having to haul them or move them in need of, if they ever need repair, becomes costly and time. Uh, the, the initial, or the lowest bidder, actually, is based out of Jackson. So you can imagine pulling the dota down there and bringing it back. So the concept of the interest of the city being the lowest and the best bid, is in our, our interest to look at, uh, the bucket machine. We also have several other pieces of machinery from bucket. They've proven to be a very good vendor of ours. Um, they respond immediately, and we have no issues with their services.
Same spec fee?
Basically same specs.
Is this for the local program to deal with?
Everybody can drive it, forget it. We do, have several people that can drive that.
Dr. Phil, I want you to tell me why this, specifically why this is the best thing. Local, a bit of local, why is it the best thing?
It's in the best interest of the city to have a vendor that can service equipment in a more timely fashion and a less costly fashion. Cost occurs when you have to move that equipment several miles, they have it maintained or also.
That, okay, Mr. Attorney? Yes, I think that's included, uh, in the written justification, that's why I'm talking about that. I thought it was provided.
Right, because what was in our packet is that we recommended to council JW H. equipment at one thirteen point four. That's what's in our packet. Uh, so if something has changed, we, um, I don't know if we need to table this, amend it?
We may need to, there may be, there may be some missing information from our department.
Correct. Because we think that, um, written statement of why we are going with someone different than what is.
How do you want to have that?
I would recommend that you, you got time to.
I do.
Written justification, why not accept the lowest dollar? Or not recommend it, except for the lowest dollar.
Can you vote pending the submission of, of the approval of the attorney? Now, we're just, not my, well, pending the, the.
Well, attorney says he's not gonna approve us to work for, on that, so I mean, the other.
Will we, can I get a motion to table the item?
Certainly.
All in favor? Any opposed? Uh, we'll table the item until we have, um, the necessary documentation to move forward. Routine item number six, order authorizing acceptance of bid for municipal reservoir.
Move through. Madam President, this is the, this is the semi-air binding, we do it every two years. Uh, authorization for municipal reservoirs for the city of Meridian. We have four institutions that have made a list, and I request that you, uh, accept them as the city of Meridian's municipal reservoirs for the next two years. Those institutions are Coastmark National Bank, Citizens National Bank, Bank Plus, and Great Southern Bank.
Are there any concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Routine item number seven, the claim stuff.
Certainly. Are there any questions on the claim stuff?
All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Presentation agenda, mayor's report.
Uh, the only thing we want to report right now is to let everyone know by the time we meet again, this will have passed. But on January sixteenth, tomorrow, the ten holidays, we'll be having tomorrow the ten graphics at Frank Tocqueville Center. Listen, parade, to follow any, uh, any questions, or anything else. Y'all can send them through to our office, and if any others correspond to us about any of that, we'll send them through to the council. So that would be on, uh, Monday, January sixteenth.
We have weekly updates today and tomorrow. Uh, we have things that, uh, we. Mr. Allen, did you receive any emails from me that asked you to question Dr. Thomas?
For, basically, can't be anything.
Yes. And I'll be in my staff Monday afternoon, or, or off last month, the day to do some. Okay, I gotta be in the hollownow, okay?
Um, next item on the agenda is citizen comments. Um, first, and the first person up is Mr. Alan Shue. Remember that you have three minutes to address the councilors and all.
Good morning. Happy New Years. First of all, I'd like to get an explanation why that we can just give ninety-three thousand dollars to our buddies, you don't have to get on it. And the bulldozer. Twenty-nine thousand, and we just give it to our buddies. Instead of taking the lowest bid, like we're supposed to. Supposedly, take care of people in the city, not spending their money, basically. Someone or the law says this, and they, there's gotta be. You just can't take a bid and buggy down your pocket once. It's not moving, answer single, I never did it. I took that. Public community, everything I write and post at my website, allenshue.com. And then the next couple of weeks, I'm gonna be explaining to people what it means for minutes are a record of what is done at a meeting, not what is said. So when they get the meetings, minutes of the meeting on the webpage, they really need to find out for made of what is said here, not what people just want to read. It's real simple. Clarity, I think, is what it's called. You know, being clear about what you're doing. We don't have to work like you, we obviously, but this one is. We just want you to do your jobs. You don't want to do your jobs, we're fine. So on my webpage, I want to put up a, a video, just want to introduce everybody, and why the city council should publicly broadcast it, not just on cable. Cable costs twenty-eight dollars. My grandmother, your grandmother probably don't have twenty-eight dollars to spend on cable so they can watch the city council meeting twice a month. But I am sure the psychic media isn't even broadcasting it at all. I don't know this for sure. I know this one's being broadcast right now. And it's gonna be given to the cable company. Otherwise, you have to go down inside, fish paper, requesting that. Cost you twelve dollars for a CD, if you can get here, if you have a CD player, if you have twelve dollars, just to find out what they're saying is doing and not doing for you. So on my webpage, soon as I can, I will be explaining this to everybody. And I hope it passes with, pass along to webpage to your friends that don't have cable. Because a hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars, not gonna be, oh, we're gonna be on the, the hell with, we're just gonna give to our buddies. Okay, wish you good morning and a good week.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we'll have council comments.
I can assure you, for the most part, this is a conservative council.
we don't like, in most cases, take, uh, a bid or spending like that. I can assure you of that.
You did it last meeting?
Yeah, I did. And most of the time, that's where most of the debates, uh, come up here. And that's again, why, as well as why there's five people up here. But we don't all think alike. And at the same time, uh, over four years, this has been a very conservative council. Uh, we'll say again that a lot of the ideas that are, a lot of the things that are done, not only were initiated by the council, but were ran through by the council and funded by the council. That said, uh, the only other comment I have is, I think the council should consider taking the same amount of time that we give the citizens. And not belabor the parts, modern apartment, if you're a citizen, you think will be heard for many words, but our actions are important, it's the plan, not a wish.
Well, you know, holiday is just exciting. I know, like, we need your faces and, and enjoy juice and I'm sure it's been, I don't know. It was a special time for Henson family. This year, our plan was like a vivid, big old house. Celebrating their sixty-third birthday. Their sister, Beverly, sat in the car in the dinner. Because she's been wearing a timeline, sitting at the corner in the car, in the church. And she didn't do it because they knew what she showed. Remember, we have a little. So we had a weird little time and I had this constant, uh, don't get a lot of news. And it was just a nice, nice time for us and I'm looking future. But, um, she's quite been home and lives out where they're gone, we got their doctors. We got them, thank you. We got them, um, at home and we just enjoyed being there with them so very much. It was a good day.
I want to thank everybody who watched the meeting, who came to the meeting, who took the time to give this meeting attention. I want to agree with one thing Mr. Shue said. Uh, well, with one thing he said, he had a job on memory, I'll spell a couple of other things, I'm gonna work really quick. There was a time during the time I've been on the council, the time that we had, when you council members, that the media, in three-two vote, they asked the question as to why the vote passed, why there wasn't dissent. Citizens, you see why it was three votes? You see that, why they're two against? Now make your own decision. Lazily, after, uh, the vote as to whether or not to allocate the ninety-three thousand dollar contract to L P K. Our, our case on last meeting, there was less than a paragraph, uh, that made up a W T O K article as to it being passed moving forward and being in the best interest of the city with no dissent as to why the two votes made up the dissent. We need to do better. Which, where the starters here try to tell me the same thing? I thought it was very, to some extent, very misleading to discuss how great the city-county partnership has been and will continue to be in the midst of a shooting death on sixteen thousand and sixteen street, a shooting death, or no, a shooting in Frankberry Courts, uh, and the mishandling of a foul arm resulting in the death of a pre-year old. Those are realistic facts. Also, things that are also realistic facts come from the Brady campaign. Give you a couple of numbers real quick, in my three minutes that the council happened to say that we wouldn't start adhering to. Every day between ages of zero and nineteen, forty-eight teens nationwide are shot, murders, assaults, suicide, suicide attempts, or unintentional shootings. Every day for a murder and then two kill themselves. Uh, amongst those numbers, thirty-two were shot in assault, one, one of the, the ones who live, thirty-two were shot in assault, one survived a suicide attempt, eight were shot unintentionally. All ages across the nation, based on the Brady campaign to prevent gun violence. Very accurate numbers. Average, three hundred people are shot each day, ninety people die from gun violence each day, and two hundred and sixteen that are shot based on gun violence each day survive. Experts estimate, consistent with the Brady campaign to prevent gun violence, experts estimate that forty percent of guns now sold nationwide are sold without a Brady background check being done. In Chicago, for the year two thousand sixteen, there were seven hundred and sixty-two homicides. We now see gun violence, nobody said anything about it. That, that entitles me, I guess it's part of the plan that we're waiting on. Uh, but there is a ever occurring problem with gun violence as, as easily and as efficiently. So I went and pulled this information to recite to you today. I challenge the media, W T O K, the new Fox station we have in Meridian Stone, to check into gun violence in our area and not just where our numbers are, but how our citizens feel about it and then what our leadership plans to do about it. Think that falls with the purview of me and me. One more thing really quickly, uh, Mr. McCruder, if I could, shortly after me, about two minutes from you, if I could. That's all I have. Everybody have a great day, have a great two thousand seventeen, have a meeting.
It's been a good year. We have been a year. City has a lot of things planned, Mr. McCruder's up here, they're doing extensive work on renovations and expansion of parks and recreation program. You don't see a lot of that. Public workers up here talking about equipment, have an extensive paving infrastructure program to be taken place. Or it's already going, already doing that. Police department's hiring, I think fifteen to twenty new officers over there, have a slots, have a plan to add those folks in. Public schools, Dr. Carter has a lot of great plans for public schools, to the point where people move back to reading in order to attend the public schools, have a meeting, so they know. So there are a lot of good things going on. State legislatures are in session, they're looking at infrastructure, we're looking at infrastructure. They're looking at education, we're looking at education. They're looking at facilities and programs for the citizens, we're doing the same thing. So there are a lot of good things going on. We came to the end of the year. We're coming to the end of a term for the city council members to debate, that'll be ending in about six months. So, uh, you're gonna see a lot of people announcing to the office, different things like that, to approach them in the next couple of weeks. But there are a lot of good things planned, a lot of good things have happened. Particularly, I want to mention, in the public schools, Dr. Carter. I think it's been exceptionally getting out into the public, working with the teachers, supporting the teachers, coming to events where the youngsters and the students are involved. So there are a lot of good things that have followed to it. It can be a great year if we make it a great year. But it's up to all of us, not just the council, not just the mayor, not just any department, it's, it's up to all of us. Hope we're all going in. We can make it that year from long to, that decision is out.
Happy New Year to everybody, we thank you for coming out this morning. Um, I really wish we lived in a perfect world where everything was perfect and peachy and, uh, there was no crime, no violence, no this and that and other. That we had a perfect school system and everything just flowed with milk and honey. I hear there's a place called heaven, that that does actually happen. And until we get there, we probably don't see that. But what we can do is be proactive, work together, show up at our schools, impact the life of the young person so that they can possibly make better decisions in the future. If you have guns in your home, make sure you lock them up, put them up, talk to your children about safety. These are things that we have to do individually and collectively. We are a village, let's act as such. Let's begin to work together in two thousand seventeen, no big eyes, no W's, no point of finger, but we all are in this place together. We are one, Meridian. We are one Meridian. And if we're pulling against one another, we will fall, we will fail. If our public schools fail, we all fail. If our police department, public works, the mayor, the city council, if any of us fall through, we all fall through. So I want to encourage us to be on one accord this year, push forward, we can finish strong. Meridian is, is on its way up, they're making great things happen. Uh, but no, we're not, uh, thinking that everything is pitch perfect, because it's not. I don't know any place that is. But what we can do is pull together, try to make a difference in the life of the people in this community and move forward. I pray that everybody will have a prosperous, blessed year, continue to come out to our city council meetings, God bless you and thank you for being here.
Amen.